I'd like to call to order the Board of Education meeting for Monday, March 13th. Please call and roll.
Mr. Dahl?
Here.
Mrs. Dernbaugh?
Here.
And Mr. Schor?
Here.
Dr. Rohr?
Here.
Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, a motion to appoint Brian Miller as Treasurer Pro Tem tonight.
Second.
Call and roll, please.
Mr. Dahl?
Yes.
Mrs. Dernbaugh?
Yes.
Mr. Schor?
Yes.
Megan Sparks?
Yes.
Dr. Rohr?
Yes.
Next, approval of the agenda as presented with the modification we made at our work session.
So moved?
Second.
Call and roll, please.
Mr. Dahl?
Yes.
Mrs. Dernbaugh?
Yes.
Mr. Schor?
Yes.
Megan Sparks?
Yes.
Dr. Rohr?
Yes. Next on the agenda is building reports from our elementary principals. Please come up. You've got 30 seconds. No, just kidding. Take all the time you want. We want to hear everything good.
All right. Well, thank you for having us. We're the first round of your two through five principal group. So we'll be reporting for Klein, Driscoll, John Hole, Normandy, Stingley, and Weller. So Lisa Mays, myself, and Rebecca will be your first round of presenters, and then Andrew, Katie, and Aaron will be our second round of presenters the next board meeting. The March topics will be talking about building supportive relationships, fostering growth mindset, and nurturing meaningful partnerships.
Hi, I'm Lisa Mays, and I'm the principal at John Hole Elementary. We have approximately 420 students and about 54 staff members.
Katie Thornton, I'm the principal of Stingley Elementary. We have about 295 students and approximately 50 staff members.
Rebecca O'Neil, principal at Normandy. Today, I have 431 students and 54 staff members. Tomorrow, it may be 432.
One thing our two through five principals who I want to talk to you a little bit about is our MTSS process that we've been going through for the last several years, which we're really shifting over to that all means all philosophy and our multi-tier system support really encompasses three different components. The first one being academics, second one being social-emotional learning, and the third one being behavior, really looking at kids holistically so we can support the whole child. Tonight, our team will be talking to you about the social-emotional learning aspect.
Now, the first, the first, no, 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 the first thing we're going to talk a little bit about is building supportive relationships. And as teachers, we have always built relationships with students. However, as we've been working through the MTSS process, I think we're learning how important those relationships are to both academics and behavior. Positive student relationships are fundamental to success, and when students feel supported, they're more likely to engage in learning, have better academic outcomes, plus positive outcomes or positive interactions with teachers also support fewer behavior problems. So a few things that we're being intentional about this year are listed. One is just simply greeting at the door, and that's just exactly what it says. Making sure that students are greeted as they walk in the building. At Normandy, they're greeted as they get off the bus and walk in the front door. I make sure I have five people there trying to look everybody in the eye and say good morning. This is also a good way for us to kind of gauge if somebody's a little, little off. When they get into the breakfast room, they're also greeted by four to five adults. Hi, how are you? How was your evening? And the same thing in the classroom. So we're being very intentional about that. The second thing listed there is banking time, and that's kind of a different, kind of a different name. But really, what banking time is, is carving intentional time throughout the day to talk with kids. For example, if you have a student who's struggling with some behavior, making sure that, you know, during this week, I'm going to make sure that I ask them about their ballgame, or I ask specific questions about their day, or I notice a haircut, or something like that where you're, you're, those little miniscule moments of time where you're continually hitting some positive things with kids, that's called banking time. The next one's class meetings and community building. I know I can speak for most, all the buildings. We've always had, oh, in the past many years, we've had class meetings, but they're very intentional now. So in a, within a classroom, you might see kids gathered around in a circle, talking about some, some particular concept, or their opinion on something. It may be just as, just a regular setting when they're working with purposeful people, but those meeting times, maybe five to seven minutes are times when you talk about your day, talk about something that you need to improve, talk about how we can do this better, or something that worked. So it's just that community building for, for students. Team-building activities are another way that, in our elementary buildings, were kind of connecting kids and connecting students. For example, we just had the cereal, the cereal.
Challenge.
Challenge, yes. And I think in all of our buildings, that was just another great way to build community and team-building. Come on, let's work together, let's get this. So, so those are intentional. We do those for a reason. And the last one we have is the five-to-one feedback. This is, this is huge. It's been part of our PBIS model, but I think we're learning more about what that means. And that just means that students and adults do better with five positive interactions to one negative. And a positive doesn't have to be, you know, a big, huge positive like a pawpaw or something like that. It can just be a smile, or a nod, or good job. But, but we need to be intentional with those because, you know, at, at times, kids could go through a path where they just get hit by a lot of negative pieces. So we need to make sure that we're intentional with those positive pieces with kids.
All right. Next, we're going to talk about fostering a growth mindset.
So we really work to build that growth mindset because that helps us build resilience and perseverance. And resilience is the capacity to withstand or to recover quickly from difficulties. So we really want our kids to be brave enough to try and take that risk of failure. We have a lot of kids that school comes naturally easy to them, and they don't always take that risk, or they don't know how to respond when they're wrong. So really, working to challenge kids, making sure that they know how to act appropriately when they're faced with those challenges, and how to persevere through that. And perseverance is persistence in doing something despite difficulties or delays in achieving success. So that was one of our Purposeful People Words of the Month was the perseverance. So we were able to talk about that throughout the month and really build that capacity in our kids. So some examples of how we do this is by empowering students to solve problems through collaborative conversations. So when we're working with students, we might coach them and help them work through some of their difficulties. We also challenge students to take ownership and accountability for their actions, and we also support students through coaching and modeling, so really helping them to be brave and to take that risk. Thanks.
All right. And the last thing we're going to be talking about is nurturing meaningful partnerships. And that's something we've really been intentional about doing as well this year, starting off with learning partnerships within our own classroom communities. We know the work of Zaretta Hammond and John Hattie really emphasize student efficacy in, in terms of students and teachers believing that students can and have the capacity to and can will learn. So the next part is communication with our families, parents, where has been a game changer for us. It's been so helpful to send out alerts, messages, regular postings to our parents. It really has streamlined our communication system and has been extremely beneficial to our school buildings. Centerville Safe has been extremely supportive of keeping our school safe and providing us what we need. We've had partnerships with Dayton Children and South Community for mental health services for our students. Schools of Excellence and Prevention has been a great resource through the county in terms of providing additional resources to us to extend ourselves to our school communities. And then the Park District has continued to be an integral part of our school system and really has been embedded into a lot of our projects we've taken on here in our school buildings. So those meaningful learning partnerships have been really helpful and beneficial to our school buildings as we take on some projects, is, I'm sure, is what Chuck's going to come talk about next, right? All right. So that's the end of our presentation. Does anybody have any questions? All right. Thank you for having us.
Thank you for coming. Thank you. Tell the next three they're going to have a hard act to follow. All right, next is public participation. Board of Education recognizes the value to school governance, to public comment on educational issues, and the importance of allowing members of the public to express themselves on school matters of community interest. The presiding officer, which is me at each board meeting, at which public participation is permitted, shall administer the following rules of the board. Participation shall be limited to 30 minutes. Attendees must register, which they have, their intention to speak, may not register other speakers, and no one can speak more than once at a meeting. Participants may, must first be recognized and will be requested to preface their comments by an announcement of their name, whether they, whether the participant is a resident or non-resident, and if appropriate, their group affiliation. Each statement made by the participant shall be limited to three minutes or less. The board will listen to all who speak. We generally do not engage in discussion or dialogue at this time, and matters requiring follow-up will be directed to the superintendent. Mr. Lee?
Okay. My name is Juan Ho Lee. I'm a sophomore here at Centerville High School. All right, first of all, I'm thankful for this opportunity to speak at this meeting. Centerville High School prides itself on its inclusiveness, which is evident throughout its various organizations and teams. It seems as though there's a way for everyone to become involved within the school community. For example, students who enjoy academics can join the Science Olympiad. Students who enjoy athletics can join one of the various sports teams, and students who enjoy music can join the band or the orchestra. Through these teams, students can form much closer bonds with their fellow peers. From my experience on the volleyball team, I've found that teams truly bring students together. These teams will also have a minimum required GPA, which in turn promotes more academic success for the students. So if there are teams for academics, athletes, and musicians, what about the students that don't fit into any of these categories? What is something that everyone can enjoy on a team, regardless of their academic ability, their athletic ability, or their musical ability? A solution that many schools have found is esports. More than 8,600 high schools in the U.S. have already seen the value of esports and created their own esports teams. The creation of an esports team has many benefits. It builds students' communication skills, teamwork, creates new friendships, improves problem-solving, decision-making, reaction time, hand-eye coordination. It increases socializing, high management skills, enhances memory, and it allows many to find their place within the school. I strongly believe that by creating an esports team, Centerville High School will be able to offer a more inclusive learning environment for all students, especially for the underrepresented students, by leading them to have more investment in their school. Mr. Olery, and Mr. Henderson, Mr. Sams, and Mrs. Willett would all support this endeavor with their time. With such support from the faculty, there's already a strong foundation for esports. Thank you.
Thank you, Juan.
Thank you.
Thank you, Anno. All right. Seeing no one else on the list, we'll move on to the Board and Administrator Reports, Legislative Reports. Mrs. Sparks?
The Senate passed Senate Bill 78 by a vote of 31 to 1. The bill would require the State Board to update the standard and module curriculum for financial literacy and entrepreneurship in grades nine through 12 to include a free-market capitalist content. State Education Committee held a third hearing on Senate Bill 11, which would expand eligibility of the Ed Choice scholarships, and Senate Bill 14, which would allow school districts to employ veterans of the U.S. Armed Forces who have met certain requirements as teachers without licenses. They also held a hearing on Senate Bill 29, which would enact laws pertaining to technology providers for education records and data. This bill would require school districts to make public certain information regarding technology providers they use. The bill also limits what school districts can access or monitor on a school-issued device. House Primary and Secondary Education Committee amended House Bill 12. This bill is a companion to Senate Bill 1. House Bill 12 would rename the Department of Education and Department of Education a workfare to do, and would create a position of Director of Education in Workforce. The bill also would reform the functions and responsibilities of the State Board of Education and the Superintendent of Public Instruction. The amendment requires the Director of Education in Workforce to appoint an individual with a point of appropriate director of primary and secondary education or career tech education. A bill that I'm starting to watch is Senate Bill 79, which would make changes to drop out prevention and recovery to community schools. Most of the stuff we talked about last week, and we're pretty familiar with. And that is the end of the report. Thank you.
Thank you, Megan. I just want to add on a little bit about House Bill 11. In the newspaper today, there's a very good story if you've not read about House Bill 11. And what they said is if, if this were implemented, and all the non-public school students took advantage of it, there'd be about 185,000 students that would be eligible for these scholarships through the state, and would cost the state, if everyone did it, $1.13 billion in the first year, taxpayer dollars, in the first year. Again, even if 75% of those eligible took it, that's about $848 million in the first year. Public schools are still not fully funded under the plan for the Fair School Acting, Fair School Funding Act, yet they're pushing this in terms of millions to billions of dollars to fund this for non-public school students. So just something to be aware that even though we're promoting these things, it comes at an extreme dollar cost for private, non-public schools, just so you know. Next, homeless public notice, Student Services.
Good evening. So this is just our yearly update about our homeless students in the district. Homeless is classified by they're in a shelter, transitional housing, unsheltered, doubled-up hotel, or motel, or an unaccompanied youth. So those are the categories. As a district, we, most of our kids are usually doubled up. Every now and then, we'll get someone that is in a shelter and an unaccompanied youth. But in most cases, they are doubled up with another family member or a friend of the family. And looking at our data for the past, I went ahead and left it for the past four years, you know, we're, we're staying relatively about the same. As you can see, from last school year to this school year, we are up a little bit. So we've had a little bit of an increase. But it, it also changes sometimes on a daily basis. So, you know, when there, when there are devastations like a fire, or, you know, sometimes family splitting, you'll end up with someone else that'll end up being homeless. If anyone knows of anyone homeless in the area within the district, then they can either email me or Tom Castleman. Our buildings, actually, our building principals and our guidance counselors are the ones that usually know before anyone else knows because they have such great relationships with their families. So they always know, you know, what is going on, and they have that communication, so they let us know if someone has been displaced. Any questions?
Those are the number of students, not the number of families, correct?
That's the number of students. We have approximately 11 families right now.
11 families, okay.
So that was the total number of students affecting about 11 families.
Sure. Eleven too many.
I would agree with that.
Thank you. Thank you, Dan. Next, Business Office Projects.
Good evening. The first issue that I'd like to talk with you about is the athletic complex that I spoke about in January. Came to you and asked for permission to start a fundraising campaign and continue to, to pursue this option for our, our students and athletes here in the district, as well as the entire community. The first part of this, as we talked about, was a baseball, softball facility. In addition to that, restroom facility for our baseball and softball teams, locker room for baseball and softball. Those restroom facilities will be able to use by the public as they're there to support tennis, support baseball, support softball. Be able to provide a changing room for tennis, cross-country teams in the fall, provide an indoor facility for, you know, for say, our football team, baseball team, softball team, be able to use that facility if there was inclement weather, if there was storms, we'd be able to utilize our, that facility. Phase two of this project would be a weight room, wrestling, and locker room, would provide an opportunity for storage for track equipment. This would impact over 700 student athletes here and potentially the youth in our community as well. So we've worked with Leaven Porter to find some additional renderings, some additional pictures, some additional images of what this facility would look like. These are just some of those images, and then I'll play a short video for you in just a second. But this would be the, the athletic facility, what this would look like. Baseball would be towards the left, and softball to the right. Here's a couple additional drawings. This shows kind of phase one and phase two. Phase one is where you would see the turf part of the field, where the mezzanine is located there on the left side for phase one. The bottom floor of that is on the right side, which shows the restrooms, the locker rooms, the meeting rooms, et cetera. The bottom part, if you're looking at the, the images, would be phase two, which would include the wrestling space, the locker rooms, additional locker rooms, excuse me, and the weight room and storage facility. Those, the first floor and second floor of that facility would be able to be seen there in those two images. Couple images of renderings of the inside. This shows where home plate would be, in addition to some batting cages, pitching lanes, et cetera. Expanded weight room, expanded wrestling room. That wrestling facility would be double the size of what we currently have. We have double the amount of wrestlers participating this year with our girls' wrestling program. And then, as we talked about back in January, the number of sports teams that are, that are lifting and exercising and utilizing that facility, it's, it's used nonstop by our athletes, and providing this additional space would, would be an additional benefit to all of our athletes. Here's the video. Again, this is a draft of this video.
Welcome to Centerville Athletics. We are excited to announce our capital fundraising campaign to build a $9.35 million facility that will revolutionize Centerville Athletics. This multi-sport facility will have a significant impact on our students, coaches, and community. The facility will allow us to train and develop student athletes and continue the legacy of excellence in Centerville Athletics. The project will be done in phases. However, if we raise the entire amount needed prior to breaking ground, there will be no phases. Phase one includes 21,414 square feet of space for an indoor turf practice facility, batting cages, men's and women's restrooms, meeting room, and four locker rooms. Phase two includes 18,758 square feet of space for a wrestling facility and weight Phase three includes 2,000 square feet of storage space to be used by our outdoor sports. To reach our fundraising goal of $8 million, we will utilize corporate sponsorships, donations, community fundraisers, and matching grants. All donations made to this project are tax-deductible. We have numerous donation levels to allow support at the level that makes sense for you. Help us build this facility and continue the tradition of excellence in Centerville Athletics. Visit our capital fundraising website located on our athletic website to donate. Go Elks!
So as we talked about back in January, when we got the okay for this project, we would do this without the use of public funds. We would do this without the taxpayer funds. We'd go out to, to companies, to individuals, to look for donations. And so as part of this, we're, we're close to $10 million as part of this project. We have some, some people that have already made some donations and come forward with commitments, and so looking to raise about $8 million as part of this project. Again, hopefully, we'd be able to, to break ground and start with phase one and phase two at the same time, but if necessary, and we would be able to go ahead and start with phase one once you reach that goal. Have an official, I'm sorry.
The video indicates a phase three as well. Is that really part of what we're seeing on here as phase two?
Yes, that's part of phase two. That's the storage facility for the, for the track piece.
Okay. So that's wrapped into the total.
We would like, we would rather just do that as part of, be more cost-effective, just to do that as part of, as phase two. So our plan is to, to present this to you tonight, and then to have a community event after spring break to kind of kick off the fundraising for this activity. Additional questions?
Nope.
I have one. Obviously, you're taking up spaces now being used for, I think, football practice. Is that right, for the middle school or for?
Yeah, there's some middle school and freshman football practices that take place there. There would still be some additional space there on the side between the, the facility and softball stadium for, for some practice. There's an additional field down at the bottom that we could utilize as well. We'd take some work to, to redo that so that, you know, it's, it's used at times for Driscoll's and shot put, and hammer throw, et cetera. And so it would take some work there, but we would locate a, a space for, for those student athletes to continue to, to continue to have practice.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kogel. Just maybe a quick question for the board, as we would like to start this right after spring break, and most likely would start before our next board meeting in April. So just want to make sure you were okay as we move forward with, with that capital campaign.
Yes.
Okay. Yeah, thank you.
The second piece is for the community, our athletes as well, but during our, our sporting events, practices, we have AEDs. But we've added AEDs at our alumni stadium, where soccer and lacrosse plays. We also have a, a track, a walking track, running track around there, and then also at our football facility as well. And so we've, we've added these AEDs. AEDs are secured in these boxes, they're able to, to be left out all year long. There's a little heater inside there, they're hooked up to electricity, there's a little heater inside that will protect them in the, in the cool temperatures. But those, those AEDs are locked, so they're secured. If there is an emergency, the community can go up, they can call 911. On the box, it tells them the location of where they're located if they're not familiar with the area. 911 dispatch has the, the code to enter, and so once you enter that code, you'll be able to, to open the, the box, remove the AED, and in the meantime, 911 Emergency Services will be on their way to, to provide assistance as well. But this is a project that we started in the fall, and started looking at options. AEDs are not cheap, and so trying to find a way that would, would secure them, but also provide the, the need for the community as well, as well as our student athletes, or anybody that is using those facilities.
Yeah, I just wanted to, I got a, an email today from a cardiologist at Dayton Children's Hospital, and they want to affiliate with our school for, it's called Project Adam, also to work with these things to prevent sudden cardiac arrest in athletes. So I'll pass that on to you guys to contact them, and basically, we would become a, quote, "safe" school for the prevention of sudden cardiac death. So I think this would be a good affiliation, again, with the local hospitals here.
That'd be great. That'd be great. Thank you.
Awesome.
And last but not least, safety grant that we were awarded from the state. This happened a, a number of years, or a couple months ago. We've been going through this process for a while. We, we're starting that bidding process today. As a matter of fact, I plan to update you at our April meeting on, on where, where things go from here. But we're working with Leaven Porter, we've worked with them on our needs. Work will be done at all 14 buildings as part of this. Like I mentioned earlier, just over a half million dollars in safety grants. We're going to use this to, to do some door replacement, as well as access control in all of our buildings. Those initial costs come in, about $1.3 million. And so obviously, a little bit more than, than what we have in that safety grant, and the difference there will be paid for by, by PI funds. There are some additional safety grants that are out there, and some additional rounds. Obviously, hopefully, we'll, we'll definitely apply for those, and hopefully, we'll be accepted to be able to, to gain some additional funds. But this is a process that, that we've been working on. Mr. Westy started when he was business manager, and actually moving forward now, and hopefully to start on this project, get to spring and to summer, and have this ready to go by the, the start of next school year. So as part of this project, part of the facility assessment that we do, we know we have a need for, for some door replacement in a lot of our buildings, but it makes sense for this door replacement to take place at the same time as this access control is being installed. So over the district, So, uh, over the district, across the district, uh, just over forty doors are gonna be replaced. In addition to that, access control, uh, for entry, uh, would be a badge system for the staff to utilize, uh, to, to enter and exit the building. It can be, can be turned off, uh, in the event that someone uses it, uh, loses that, that, that badge, uh, there'd be a way to, to turn that off. Uh, there's certain access times that, that teachers, principals, maintenance, et cetera, would have, and so we would be able to control that, uh, that badge system. Uh, all this is part of recommendations by our resource officers as well as the FBI when they came in and did assessments of our building. Uh, one of the pieces, uh, not just a, a door replacement, but some of the hardware will be replaced as well. Uh, I've got an image here of, of the doors here at Centerville High School. Uh, one of the tragedies that happened, it took place at Virginia Tech, uh, was that the, um, the shooter, the assailant chained doors shut, and as part of this process, we would be able to, to remove, uh, a piece of that hardware, uh, so that that would not be able to be done in any of our school buildings, uh, to provide safe exit at all times. Questions about this project? Okay, thank you.
What's the timeframe on it?
So, uh, going out to bid today.
Okay.
And so that, that information is out there, but we hope to have those bids in and finalize and, and come to you for approval of that at the April meeting right after spring break, and then we'll be able to get started at that, hopefully, get to spring and into summer.
Okay. So, um, the, the badge system would start for the, the new school year in the fall?
Correct. Correct. That's all part of the, the bid process is, is the company would come in and, and set that, that process up with, work with us, work with our, uh, picture. We'd, we'd integrate that process as part of this.
Thank you. All right. Next, Treasurer's Recommendations. Consider approving the February twenty-three financial statements below, the monthly general fund rolling report, monthly cash reconciliation, monthly fund activity report, the then-and-now purchase orders approved by administration, certified by the treasurer and supported by board resolutions totaling seventy-four thousand six hundred forty-six dollars and ninety-five cents. Motion, please?
Moved.
Second.
Call the roll.
Mr. Dahl?
Yes.
Mrs. Dernbaugh?
Yes.
Mr. Schroyer?
Yes.
Megan Sparks?
Yes.
Dr. Rohr?
Yes. Next, consider approving the minutes on the following Board of Education meeting, February twenty-seventh, twenty-three, the regular meeting. Motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Call the roll.
Mr. Dahl?
Yes.
Mrs. Dernbaugh?
Yes.
Mr. Schroyer?
Yes.
Megan Sparks?
Yes.
Dr. Rohr?
Yes. Next, consider approving a resolution accepting the amounts and rates as determined by the Budget Commission and authorizing the necessary tax levies and certifying them to the County Auditor for Taxuree Twenty-three, Twenty-four.
So moved.
Second.
Call the roll, please.
Mr. Dahl?
Yes.
Mrs. Dernbaugh?
Yes.
Mr. Schroyer?
Yes.
Megan Sparks?
Yes.
Dr. Rohr?
Yes. Next, the Superintendent Recommendations. Superintendent recommends accepting the resignations listed on Schedule A, recommends the employment, change of employment status or change of contract status for the certificated personnel listed on Schedule B for the salaries, programs, and on the effective dates given, recommends the employment or change of employment status for the support staff personnel listed on Schedule C for the salaries, programs, and on the effective dates given, recommends the employment of the personnel listed on Schedule D and D1 for supplemental contracts or extra-duty assignments, and the Superintendent recommends the granting of leaves of absence for the personnel listed on Schedule E for the reason and on the dates given.
So moved.
Second.
Call the roll, please.
Mr. Dahl?
Yes.
Mrs. Dernbaugh?
Yes.
Mr. Schroyer?
Yes.
Megan Sparks?
Yes.
Dr. Rohr?
Yes. Next, consider approving a resolution to purchase seventeen hundred HP eleven G nine EE Chromebooks for two-hundred-and-fifty-five dollars and twenty-nine cents each, for a total of four-hundred-thirty-three thousand nine-hundred-ninety-three dollars from Staples, using a combination of grant funding and permanent improvement funding. Grant funding, the grant funding will be about eighty-five percent, and the, uh, PI will be about fifty thousand dollars or fifteen percent.
So moved.
Second.
Call the roll, please.
Mr. Dahl?
Yes.
Mrs. Dernbaugh?
Yes.
Mr. Schroyer?
Yes.
Megan Sparks?
Yes.
Dr. Rohr?
Yes. Next, consider resolution authorizing Centerville City Schools to administer to the State of Ohio Third Grade English Language Arts Assessment in paper format for the twenty-three, twenty-four-year school. That is just for the third grade.
So moved.
Second.
Call the roll.
Mr. Dahl?
Yes.
Mrs. Dernbaugh?
Yes.
Mr. Schroyer?
Yes.
Megan Sparks?
Yes.
Dr. Rohr?
Yes. Next, any final comments regarding pastoral business from the board?
I have some. Um, as you know, we sold part of our land to the Park District, including those cabins, and with the help of Mr. Westney and Mr. Kogel's team, they were able to take down those signs, and on behalf of the board, they were donated to the Historical Society, and they were really excited. Again, I guess those cabins are historical, so they thank all of us for thinking about it.
Cool. Great. Great. Good job.
One thing I'd like to comment on, Dave, is not only do we have to worry about some things that's being passed by legislators for education issues, but the biggest thing that's gonna affect our school district and a lot of our school districts is what they're doing with the budget. And today, there was a release of an announcement about their House Bill One, and if it goes on, or goes through as passed, it's gonna dramatically increase property taxes for all the citizens that are in this state. It's gonna decrease school funding, and it's gonna be a disaster for school districts like Centerville. So please get with your state legislators. Could be a dramatic change in us. I think we've got a report, uh, last month that it's gonna be potentially a six-million-dollar loss for us. Am I right, Brian?
Or?
Yeah, we're still waiting on some more of the preliminary, preliminary numbers forecast now, but that was some of the initial numbers.
Right. So please get with your legislators. If that goes through what they're doing, and it's been going on for a long time, is they wanna decrease some taxes, give an income tax break, then makes all local governments, city, state, township, counties, increase taxes in order to make up for the losses. So that's still on the table, is still being discussed, and it looks like it's gonna get passed. So please contact their legislators.
And our state rep is Tom Young and our state senator is Niraj Anthony. Call them often, often. All right, motion for adjournment.
Um, I just wanted to, I'm sorry, I just wanted to congratulate our student board reps and specifically Arushi on an excellent program this morning. Um, I know that the, the elementary principals in their presentation mentioned it, but it